David Kelly. So Doug isn't here, I see. So gentlemen, if you would come to the podium. I'm not sure who's all speaking, but you have ten minutes for your presentation. Welcome and good afternoon.
Just passing around the copies of the slides.
Thank you.
Your worship, councillors, thank you very much for giving us this time. As his worship indicated, I brought, I have two of our members here just introducing. David Kelly, just sitting down is our current president of Legion. And on his right is John Pollen, past president and currently the poppy chair for the branch. I'm the youngest member of the branch. And as such drew the shortest straw and it's up to me to make the presentation. I'm Rod Bell Irving, the second president of the Legion. First slide, please. I have a button, my fault. In case you haven't committed to memory, I'm just reminding you of why we exist, what we are, who we are as a legion. You may not be aware that there's over 500 branches of the Legion throughout Canada. It's one of the oldest institutions in Canada, established by an act of parliament in the 1920s shortly after the first war. Almost 400,000 members in the Legion. I'm pushing the right button here. Oh, there we are. Who are we relevant to the Legion? We are branch 160. And here in Comox, our charter was granted in 1939. For 77 years here in the valley and in this town of Comox. We are a not-for-profit society, not a corporation, not making money other than through donations and through member volunteer support and work. The Poppy Fund, obviously, and the Poppy Campaign once a year contributes significantly to that. But we are entirely a member volunteer-based organisation. Speaking of members, volunteers, currently at this time, 2016, this branch combined with the Ladies' Auxiliary have a total of over 950 members here in Comox now. There's 860 branch members and over 80 ladies auxiliary members in the branch. And a point that I wish to stress and bring to your attention, although I'm well aware that you're familiar with this generally. We give to the valley, as indicated here, in the order of $40,000 to $50,000 a year in grants and donations to as many as 25 to 30 organisations, charitable organisations throughout the valley. It's a long list and we're very proud of our ability to do that. Why are we here today? This next slide talks about a plan of action. You may be well aware that for some time we've been talking about redevelopment in various discussions and approaches to council planning department. We've taken a step back from talking about detailed development plans right now. We decided that before we get too far into deciding details of what we're doing and what we're going to build, we really have to decide what we're building it for and why we're building it. So we're taking a futuristic, longer-term perspective on what it is we're doing. So we're calling this a plan of action. And we're bringing it here today, introducing the fact that we're doing, doing just that. And why we're here? We're going to use this plan of action to define and reshape our role in terms of what the Legion does, not what it's done, but what it's going to do in the future. What is our purpose in the valley 10, 20 years from now? That's very important to us. We, secondly, are working at this plan of action to maximise and enhance existing strategies to serve not only our members, but our community. Because we don't exist without the involvement, support of our community, County Comox and the residents of the valley, and our role. And through all of that, we will eventually come to the question of whether or not we're going to renovate or rebuild. That's kind of pushed off the end of the back of the train, so to speak, right now. We're really interested in defining what our role is. In order for a plan of action to be successful, as indicated here, we require not only the support of our members, but most importantly, input and buy-in from those partner organisations and community groups that we currently serve. And it's for that reason that we're here before you today, to invite you as council representative, citizens of Comox, to look for ways and to suggest ways that you would like, if at all possible, to work with us, to provide input, to tell us what your vision of the future of the Legion might be, how we can work with the town to advance the town's objectives together with ours into the future. So what does all this mean and what do we want today in terms of takeaway? Point number one, we're seeking input and dialogue, not here today, we have 10 minutes, but to invite you at some point at your pleasure to provide input and to maintain dialogue with us as we go through the development. Secondly, to indicate to you that on June the 25th coming next month, we will be holding an open house information fair. And we are inviting all of the 20 to 30 organisations that we sponsor and help support to attend that open house, make a presentation, put a display up to use as an opportunity to inform the community, and our members for that matter, of the importance of their work and what they're doing to the community. And we're also taking the opportunity to ask them as our partners to take the opportunity to tell us what it means to them if we weren't here in 10 years. And what, how can we work with them to see that we have a meaningful purpose and role in the community in the future? So it'll be an open house, not just to talk about the Legion, but more importantly, our imprint and footprint on the community. And we're inviting you and the town and the public generally to attend. And because it's state council, and I know the propensity to, it's within your authority, I believe, to make declarations and important decisions, we're asking you to consider possibly the notion that June 25th Saturday might be at your pleasure declared as Legion Day here in the town of Comox, to bring attention to the public and the fact that this is what we're doing. We intend, of course, to be working with the media and having advertisements in the paper and publishing it that way, but I would invite and ask for your indulgence to consider that. That is my presentation. The last slide tells you who I am. If you have any questions or have any information you want to get hold of me, that's who I am and how you can get hold of me.
Well, thank you for that, Rod. Just on that last request, that's something that, one of the very few things I get to do without too much process through council is the declaration. So we'll get that processed for you. The secretary will get that prepared and it'll be posted on our bulletin board. And I don't know if there's other questions of you or your delegation from the Members' Council.
Very good presentation, thank you. Where do you see the Legion going locally here in Comox?
That's a loaded question, sir. And I'll leave a fifth on that one, only because as Chair of the committee, it's not my place to necessarily manipulate or direct. I'm here to listen. I'm seeking input from the members, most importantly, and from the community. I have my own views, obviously, my own opinions. I have a personal conviction that as a British Columbian, as a resident of this province, as long as I have been and my family's been, we have a duty to see the Legion continue. If we do nothing, I would guarantee that in 10, maybe 20 years, we won't be a Legion. You look anywhere in Canada and you'll see people dropping off. But look at our numbers. We have 900-plus members. But if you ask me, how many of those are active? Not many. So we've got some work to do. But I think the opportunity is huge. And it's more than that, it's a responsibility.
Right. And so have your members, rough percentage, like, because I understand now that the Legion, you can be like a regular citizen, right? You don't have to be a military or a C P. Is it true, anybody can join the Legion now?
Yes, the Legion nationally, at some time in the past, opened up the doors, as it were, and they have categories of membership which don't require prior service. We, I might add, as membership chair, I'm very familiar with our statistics and I can tell you that we're amongst the leaders in British Columbia of having the vast majority of our members as called ordinary members, i.e. past military service. Almost 600 of our members, or 900 are military members. We have the associates and we have the affiliates, but we have a majority that are military. And why not look at where we live?
Councillor Price.
Yes, and thank you. And you're quite right, and I've observed in other communities that Legion is in decline and instead we can see that in Comox instead of the active. And so with the fair and the consistence of you, are you also seeking some non-profit partnerships?
We're asking the nonprofits, we're just entering in the dialogue now with the nonprofits to discuss how they would participate. But our vision is that they would come, we'd set up a table in the hall where they would display what work they do, what they do with the money that we give them, what they need in the way of more funds, more future, what their future is. And most importantly, we're going to ask them, how can we help them achieve those goals in the future? That's what we're looking for, is that input. And that input will shape our vision, our plan, and ultimately maybe manifest itself in our building. What is it we build, if we build anything? What facilities, what services we're offering? I think it's your own efficiency plan gives us a great deal of flexibility, which we're very grateful for in terms of the scope, the tension. Of course, it's a matter of economics and certain realities which we'll have to deal with.
And, and, thank you. Are you also looking at private investment?
Not at this point, no. We are very proud owners of our property and very possessive of our heritage and our responsibility. And we haven't had any discussion, I'm not aware of, in fact, that the articles of the Legion allowing for that as, as part of our funding model. We're entirely based on volunteers. And if we do a development, if that ever comes to that, obviously a priority for us is to maintain ownership and control. It's not to turn it over to some third party and have us relegated to a postage stamp on the bottom of the building. I think that's going to happen.
Certainly got a very implication there, in helping get there.
We think it is, it's a view property.
Councillor McKenna.
Yes, sir. Thanks for the presentation. And it regards to the value of the Legion and our community. As somebody who's been a part of a beneficiary, is a school administrator to students, and also a member of a nonprofit that's received donations here, I think, and I wonder if all the community realises the amount of money that the local Legion gives to local charitable organisations? And that in itself, to me, strikes support as to the value of the Legion's continuing in that community.
I thank you for that, councillor, and I agree with you. I think the impression is that most people don't know, if I could be so trite and suggest the general image of the public, that we're just an old man's dreaming club. And what the hell are we here for in the first place? Now, that may be overstating it, but in reality, we don't do a good enough job of telling people how much we are contributing. And this Legion Open House Fair Day will be the start of a new look. We're going to have, we're going to proudly display who we're contributing to, how much. Not that that's everything, but it speaks volumes.
All right, thank you. All right, seeing no further questions, thank you for your presentation. And we'll forward that proclamation to you.
Thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen. Next delegation is David Stappley. I believe you're here on your own, Miss Sandra?
Yes, unfortunately Sandra's unable to attend. Which is probably more unfortunate for you than for me.
Well, you have 10 minutes for your presentation, sir. I appreciate it.
Thanks very much. So I'm going to get some help from your staff, so I will be queuing when I need to change the slide. Anyway, my name's David Stappley. Most of you can know me, I'm project manager with the Comox Valley Conservation Strategy Community Partnership. I coordinate our 21 organisations, members and assist our volunteers and staff, implement our conservation, education and advocacy projects in the valley. An example of some of our members are the Brooklyn Creek Stream Keepers, Comox Town Residents Association, Comox Lazo Forest Preserve Society. Anyway, my purpose today is to present the updated sensitive ecosystem inventory information and to ask that you support your staff attend a workshop we are offering on effective regulation to protect environmentally sensitive areas, or ESAs as they're known. There have been three assessments of the sensitive ecosystem in the Comox Valley. The most recent was completed in 2012 and is outlined in this report, of which I have copies of manual hype to take some with them. We're going to talk a bit about what the inventory tells us about the health of sensitive ecosystems in the valley and the types of impacts that have affected them. Just to note that the 2012 report was commissioned by our own organisation with, with support from the Real Estate Foundation of B.C., as well as funding from the Comox Valley Regional District and some technical support from the map department as well. So an ecosystem is defined as a portion of the landscape with relatively uniform or dominant vegetation. A sensitive ecosystem is one that is fragile and/or rare. In the Comox Valley area, there are seven kinds of sensitive ecosystems. There are also two other kinds of ecosystems which are being disturbed by human use, but they are also very important in terms of their biodiversity and ability to provide wildlife habitat. The first sensitive ecosystem inventory was done in 1992 and this was conducted by the Canadian Wildlife Service and the B.C. Ministry of the Environment. And they also did the second one in 2002. And we did the one in the valley in 2012, using the same methodology. The first ecosystem inventory shows that in 1992, there were 18% of the sensitive ecosystems were intact. So what that means that 150 years ago, when contact was made, there would have been all green on the screen, right? It would have had 100%. So for 150 years, he went down to 18% that are remaining intact. The second inventory in 2002 shows that in the decade from 1992 to 2002, there was a decline. In fact, only 10 and a half percent of the land base was still intact ecosystems. And if you look at the map, the green areas again are the intact ones. The yellow is what we call fragmented or degraded, reduced, and the black are considered lost. Next slide. By 2012, a significant portion of the sensitive ecosystems were lost or degraded. That assessment shows that they make up 4.9% of the landscape. So this is what remains. About 4.9% remain intact. Of that 4.9, that's the green areas, only 7% of them are protected as parkland or in conservancies or as, in a covenant. We, the yellow areas are fragmented sites. It doesn't mean they don't have ecological habitat, they certainly do. They just, it's just been reduced somewhat. So what we're left with is our intact ones and we want to try to restore and improve the remaining ones that are fragmented. So let's see what this looks like when you look at ecosystem types.
Actually, David, interrupt you for a second here? And go back to your first slide to 92, for a second.
Go back to 92, right, thanks.
So when I look at Comox and those green areas, I assume that's North East Woods, Lazo Marsh, one area, and the other area perhaps is over at the farming area?
That would, that would likely be the farm that would be seasoned for agricultural aid.
Right.
There's periods down in here.
So just coming back to North East Woods, and I've been here since 92, you're saying that that has been degraded from green to yellow and yet the only thing I've seen done in the North East Woods is actually we've enhanced its protection through various covenants, cromroats and the like. So I'm just wondering, who decides what degrade means and what isn't that? That's subjectivity or is that objectivity? Because if anything, we've done more to protect that area over the last number of years than it seemed to be indicated.
Right. So in 1992, that wasn't a protected piece of land, right? That was, okay. So I don't, I didn't do the inventory in 1992 or 2002. That was done by the Canadian Wildlife Service and the B.C. Ministry of the Environment. But what a fragmented site, and if you look at Seal Bay Park, it's the same thing. Why is it a fragmented cycle? It's because there's a road that goes through it and there's also lots of recreational trails. So you still have an intact canopy of second growth forest, right? But because it has been used a lot more for, as a park, it has lost some of its value for wildlife. So this is why when we go back to 2012, we have these areas still on the map. Just because they're fragmented, doesn't mean they don't have value. We're just saying that in that time when they did the assessment, they were downgraded from intact to fragmented or reduced.
That just seems questionable to me, that's all.
Well, this area here, I don't know if it was reduced in size over that 20-year period. It was fragmented in somehow or degraded somehow. I can't tell you because I didn't do the study.
Yeah, well, I think that's an important thing. I mean, when you throw those numbers out there, those percentages, it does seem alarming, yet that's not what we've done in North East Woods. So I think that needs to be looked at. I don't know what they did in 92, but if anything, we've enhanced that. Yes, there's people through there, of course, but there's been people going through there for years.
Right. I can get you the specific information on that ecosystem if you like. I just don't have it with me today, sorry.
It's, it's just, it's puzzling based on what you presented.
Okay. Well, I can't, again, I said I don't have, I didn't do the inventory in 2002. It was done by the federal government ministry of environment. We just followed their, their protocols. Of course, 1992, sorry, 2012, I don't know if that was when it become protected or it happened the next year, because we're looking at 2012 data.
There's been different efforts over different years. In North East Woods?
No, no, the North East Woods, it was crown land, right?
Yep. The little piece we had there.
Add on, that's what I was talking about, the North East Woods.
The last five years ago, the cul-de-sac, the Texas, this means it's a little bit.
I don't know, maybe because the invasive species, I don't know what it is that was happening in that time period, but. But I can find that for you. All right, sorry. Okay, so let's look at, in terms of specific ecosystems, we'll look at the riparian areas, for example. This is again, that 20-year period. Half of the riparian ecosystems were impacted, or the riparian areas that were lost. 82% was due to development and 82% to logging. If you look at the forest stands, 60 to 100 years old, 11% were lost was due to development, 18% to logging. Woodlands have been heavily impacted, 91% of loss was due to development. In fact, the woodlands were now, for gary oaks, anyway, were basically just counting trees and patches. And wetlands were also quite impacted, or the wetlands that were lost, 75% were lost due to development. The challenge is that many of these development impacts occurred in relatively small sections, but added up over time and space on land, they have cumulative impacts. In the Brooklyn Creek watershed in the town, development has encroached into the riparian area. The result of development in this zone is a loss of the natural vegetation that helps slow down and spread water running off the land. Naturally vegetated riparian areas filter and clean water running off developed land. Loss of the riparian buffer leads to erosion and lower water quality. This is an example of how small changes from individual developments reduce and fragment environmentally sensitive areas, create cumulative impacts on the landscape. Here's another way to view how the impacts have added up in the Comox Valley. What you're looking at is the green areas are areas that, and they change to brown or grey. Those are areas that have been impacted by logging or development. Want to just run that again and let's go through that quickly? This time-lapse video of the Comox Valley air photo shows changes from development and logging between 1982 and 2011. There is so much more data that the SEI report can tell us, but we don't have the time. But the really important thing that the report illustrates is that we are on a path of continuous loss and degradation of largely sensitive areas. It is well documented that natural areas aid local governments' service delivery. They reduce the need for and cost of engineered infrastructure. When natural, when nature is viewed as a capital asset and left intact or restored, it provides ecosystem services which have advantages over engineered infrastructure. For example, localised and large-scale flooding is mitigated when intact natural landscapes can slow down and spread out water and runoff from big rain events. This means less infrastructure damage downstream. Those same landscapes, areas of biodiversity and natural vegetation, also act as natural filtration to clean water. How can we not value that at a time when we are on the precipice of the enormous water treatment plant? Next slide. The town of Gibson's has demonstrated how natural assets can be incorporated into the same asset management system as engineered infrastructure. They have reduced the issues created by cumulative impacts and degradation of natural areas and successfully mitigated costs to the town. Natural ecosystem services are benefiting the community by remaining in place and intact. Conversely, if natural ecosystem services are impacted or removed in the course of development, they have to be replaced with engineered infrastructure. More engineered infrastructure needed equals more infrastructure cost and more maintenance over the long term. Development encroaching the riparian areas, such as in this area of the creek, removes the natural vegetation that cleans and slows down water running off the land into the creek. This leads to erosion, loss of fish habitat, sedimentation and contributes to flooding downstream. Natural vegetation manages 75% of the rainfall through infiltration and evapotranspiration. When natural vegetation is removed and replaced by impermeable surfaces and lawns, rainwater is managed through, through the installation of stormwater infrastructure. This infrastructure needs maintenance and eventual replacement, which costs the town billions of dollars. This is just one example of cumulative impacts of developing environmentally sensitive areas. The point is that it tells how environmentally sensitive areas are lost and why natural areas should be viewed as an asset to the community. The SEI report clearly illustrates that we have, we are on the verge of losing the last areas of our intact sensitive ecosystems in the valley. In the 20 years since the first assessment was done, existing regulations and policies have adequately protected sensitive ecosystems from the impacts of development. In our Brooklyn Creek example, regulation could have directed development away from these sensitive areas and required more low-impact development approaches that would have left the riparian area intact and protected the natural ecosystem services provided to the community while still providing an opportunity to develop land. The town of Comox can continue to improve policies and regulations that address the development-related reasons contributing to the loss of environmentally sensitive areas. Through policy and regulation, you can effectively stop any further loss and fragmentation of these areas. We would like to support the town to take steps to continue to improve regulations by putting forward an opportunity for staff to attend a half-day workshop on effective regulations for environmentally sensitive areas on June 10th. We will be hosting the workshop and are asking today for you to support your staff through 10. The workshop is led by Deborah Curran. She is a professor in environmental law and sustainability at the University of Victoria, as well as the program director of the Environmental Law Centre. Her primary focus is on land use and law and has significant experience in analysing and making recommendations on how local governments approach regulation and planning for environmental protection, particularly in the context of smart growth and ecosystem integrity. protection, particularly in the context of smart growth and ecosystem integrity. For our part, the Comox Valley Land Trust is currently assessing and prioritizing sensitive ecosystems and other high-value ecological sites within the valley for protection through acquisition or covenant. We are also working with the province and other conservancies to propose new tax incentives to encourage land protection. We will, we'll be coming back to you later this year with a proposal for improving E D P A regulations or environmental area regulations. We feel that the losses that have occurred could have been mitigated by the use of these regulations and would have directed development away from sensitive areas. Natural areas provide quantifiable benefits to local governments. We hope that over time, that the losses of the E S As can be stopped and what has been lost or impacted by development can be restored. Today, we're asking you to take, on our invitation, to support our request for staff to attend the workshop. Anyways, want to thank you again for your time and contact information is there. I did send out by email copies of the workshop to all the council staff.
Thanks. Staff will take that.
If you'd like a copy of our inventory report, it sounds like you might be interested.
Well, I, I think you can send any of that information to your staff and they'll take that opportunity and our advice. Any questions? Seeing none, thank you, David.
Thank you.
The next delegation, I believe, is from the Comox Rec Center, Amy Maugh. And welcome to the podium. Oh, you just gotta wing it. Go ahead.
Easter eggs are hidden at night, right?
Yeah. Anyways, good afternoon, mayor, council. My name is Amy. I'm one of the recreational programs at the Rec Center. And I'm here just to give you a brief overview of our Easter extravaganza that happened here on March 28th down here in Marina Park and the use and availability in Marina Park for the committee. And it's working. There we go. So it was just a short event, 11:30 to 2, but served the committee pretty well, I'd say, from the speaker. So myself, I worked with two other organizations here in the valley. I worked with Yana, Yurinalo in Comox Valley, and Investors Group. So that's Kathy Pulon from the Investors Group and Ocean Barney from Yana. And together, we came up with the continuation of our Easter extravaganza and hosted it this year. So we were able to, with the event, work with 11 community groups and businesses here in the valley. And we had a staff team of about 40 volunteers. So those volunteers came from school district 71, from Yana themselves, from the town of Comox, and from the Investors Group. We all came together for the day. So big sponsors of ours were Quality Foods, which provided a lot of the prizes for the Easter egg hunt, as well as all the hot dogs, pop, juice boxes, everything for the charity barbecue. As well, a big contribution was to R. Eldred with Comox Valley McDonald's. They provided coffee, tea, juice, and a thousand cookies to hand out on the day. So they really went above and beyond. We also had Eagle Radio. Linda Thomas had us on Eagle on the Street. She did a few phone-in interviews. They were great for the lead-up to the event. We had Citizens on Patrol there doing a soccer shootout for the kids with their radar guns. The R C and P were there with Safety Bear, who at one point arrested the Easter Bunny. He was great. And, and they were there handing out R C and P hats and stickers, tattoos. And we had, of course, our very own Comox Fire Rescue there helping out, having the fire engines there and all the gear for the kids to meet. We had Mark Villanueva there sponsoring the Zorb Balls, which were a huge hit in the lineup all day long. Mountain City Cycle donated one of the mountain bikes. That was one of the prizes in the Easter egg hunt. And Investors Group purchased the other mountain bike. That was the other prize in the Easter egg hunt. So that was one of the winners there of his bike there. We had Relay Event Rentals donated these to the propane and the barbecues for the charity barbecue. And Royal Page Realty sponsored us with a big 30 by 30 tent for all the tables and chairs for people to eat under. Superstore was a huge promoter and a huge sponsor. In 2015, they took all of their Easter stuff that was left on the shelves and we picked it up and stored it at the Investors Group and then used it for our prizes for this year, as well as they donated a $100 gift card to sort of top up the prizes for this year. So, yes, some of our Yana volunteers. So the day started bright and early, 9:00 a.m. here in the park with setup of the Easter egg hunt area. We had two, the six and under age group and the seven and over. The volunteers checked in and they were given a station and they went directly to that station, set up and manned that station for the entire day. And then we went on to volunteer meeting and we sort of just ran everyone through what was going to happen during the day, where everything was, what the procedures were. So everyone was on the same page. And as you can see, it was a beautiful day. We ordered that weather and we lucked out this gorgeous day. So, so families arrived, they went to the Yana tent to check in. They were by cash donation, they were giving over the money and in return, they got a wristband. And that wristband allowed them to access all the activities and all the games in the park. So there was no cost other than their donation for any of the events. The Easter egg hunt itself is free, so anybody could have taken that. And we had even extra Easter baskets there for people to, to use. So, and then just before the hunt started, we gathered everyone here at the upper pavilion, or tried to. And a big thank you to our sponsors, let them know how the event would run with Quality Foods, gold coins and their prizes and the plastic Easter eggs with the Superstore prizes. And then just, everybody on the field as well, so we just ran everyone through that. We gave a big thank you to all our sponsors. And then the crowds emerged and, and we had, we think roughly about 1,000 people there. Quality Foods donated 600 hot dogs and we ran out of those in an hour and a half. So it was a great, great day here. I mean, the Rec Center, we contributed with the time and the organization that I helped out with. We had our inflatable bounce castle down there. You can see in the lower pavilion there. Those great families from all over the valley, I would say. So the hunt started, we had the Easter Bunny there, giving out chocolates to any of the kids that missed out on any of the prizes, but Easter baskets were full. There was kids everywhere. It was really fun. And so with the activities, we tried to engage the entire community and have activities for all of the kids. So we had bowling and patino sack races and egg and spoon races for the little ones, croquet, face skating, parachute games, beanbag tosses and Easter egg tosses. And then for the older kids, we had the Zorb Balls, like I said, were a huge hit. The inflatable bounce castle, the fire rescue, huge hit. The kids were able to go into the fire trucks, fire engines. They're the R C and P with their police cruiser and their police van. We even had plasma cars and basketball and road hockey and everything from the Rec Center come down. So, like I said, it was a fabulous day with a ton of people down here, lots of smiley faces. And of course, the end goal was to raise a lot of money for Yana and help out a great organization here in the valley. And so we, I think we did it and I think Yana thinks we did it, but we raised $3,180.80 in the day for Yana and they were very appreciative of that. And so just a thank you for the town of Comox and mayor and council, all your support in this event and, and everyone else that went into a great day here for the kids and families in the Comox Valley. That's it. That's all I have to say. Just filling in on what we're doing up at the Rec Center.
Any questions?
Just that I was there with my grandson, he praised it.
Thank you.
So there's no truth to the rumor that Council Arnott was also arrested for trying to steal all the Easter eggs from the kids?
Is it possible that Marty ate the Florida hot dogs?
Hundred percent possible, yeah.
All right, well, well done and look forward to, obviously, a bigger mayor, a better next year.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll move on to departmental reports. So we have fire department report for received. Move over. Received and all's in favor? Questions cleared to fire chiefs here for any questions or comments the council may wish to make.
Just wondering about this little, what do you call it, the water tender trailer? How's that working? That looks like a really good idea, actually.
I think it's a great idea.
It was obviously yours.
It's been put into service. We haven't used it yet for an act of fire, but we've been training with it. We used it last night for training. It seems to be performing as we expected it would. It's a great solution to an ongoing problem with water delivery in our, particularly in rural areas where we don't have hydrants.
Like a real good solution to find fire trucks.
Counselor McKenna.
This is a shuttle to our fire chief and members and support members there for the Port Pack fundraiser that we had successfully there. Just a great turnoff and just another example of our giving community and our giving staffs. Thank you for that, too, members.
And I have a potentially stupid question, but I thought of this last year when we had all the water restrictions, but are you able to fill up that tank from the river? You know, fresh water if need be, or is there filtration issues? This, this water tank that you have? Or your fire trucks?
We can fill from any water source, whether it's saltwater swimming pools, creeks, lakes, rivers. I mean, there may be some fishing, fishery issues and other things taking water from the river at certain times.
Yeah, but in the pinch you can't.
Yeah. In the pinch, we're prepared to push saltwater if we have to.
Yeah.
We'll get lots of that.
Counselor Grant.
Now, I'm embarrassed to ask this question, but I actually went online for it so that I could find the answer and not do this. However, I couldn't find it. Now, that doesn't mean a whole lot either. But I was trying to find just exactly the area that you are looking after and where in fact is the Comox Fire Protection District? Because where we sit in our deck, I'm looking out at fires, I was, on a regular basis. And of course, couldn't be, the town of Comox, so I wonder where it is. And so, and I don't know where that boundary is.
The Comox Fire Protection District is a large part of Area B, so we protect right up to Silvee Park along the peninsula. And so little rivers, all that corridor.
Okay. And their rules, of course, obviously are different.
They have different bylaws and we also protect the Bay Chuban area, so kind of an inland area there. We do that by contract. We also protect the Comox A to B reserve. So they all, all four of those groups have their own sets of rules.
Do you ever have volunteers coming from those areas to?
Yeah.
You do, eh? Well, that's good. Great.
Okay. Any further questions? Thank you, chief. All right, so we'll move on to the next report, which is the Planning and Building Department report for received. Move over. We see it all's in favor. Questions cleared. Planner is here for any questions or comments. Counselor Grant.
I just have one quick question on development variance permits, a variance converting existing dwelling to an accessory building. So is this a case where somebody's building and they want to keep the original house? Do you do that? Because I know in the past, it's always been build a house, take the other one down. So what do you have to do to make it something else? Was it?
Right. And that's where this is coming from, is infancy because of servicing, but there is an inner house. It was, had some significant monies put into renovate it 25, 10 years ago. It's no longer suitable for the property owner's needs and they wish to have a new house. They can't have two houses on the property, so they want to convert it from a house, a small older house, into an accessory building. And there's a massive accessory building size. And so this variance wouldn't allow them to do that. But they would be then moving the kitchen facilities and larger group facilities in terms of things like shelves that are built in.
So great. That's not wasting a building. Like, oh, you think it's still?
Yeah, we have, we're also looking at, looking at a much better sort of interface with the street in terms of, instead of looking like a very large accessory building, or like a cute residential, done-up accessory building, right? So it fits in a little bit better.
Counselor Grant.
Yeah, under your building permits, I notice you, 2014, you had about $9 million. This year, we're down to about $204 million. That's almost half the drop. Now, I, I would assume that that number will go up with the number of things that are on the books right now, but what can you attribute that change to? There must have been some big projects or something. I'm trying to figure it out.
Yeah, 2014 saw, in that first quarter, we saw 3.3 million in multifamily and 3.2 million in institutional. Both those categories are really sort of, they only come up occasionally.
Okay.
They really skew the number in that. So it's, it's something that isn't, isn't as consistent as, say, single-family.
Okay. Counselor, Eric, your finance.
Your worship, I think that institutional was us.
Yeah, the property.
The horse buildings.
Right, of course. Okay. Counselor Swift.
Just, I'm not familiar with this property, but it's the same one that Counselor Price was talking about. Would that be possible to be goldshox instead of just a sensory building?
Typically, yes. That area is actually, it's in the Butchers Road area, so it's in the south portion. The, it is, it has an allowance that, like all properties in the town, you have to have water and sewer, you have to water and install sewer. But given the distance that some of those parcels are from the current term of, of water and sewer, there is an allowance for sort of base level activity to be on well and semi. And that's really looking at one senior family building, but a secondary suite, hence the accessory building. If they wish to, that's only, you have allowance, no, has allowance for secondary suites. Coaches, I don't know off the top of my head, but if they wish to exercise that in water and sewer, you have to buy a sewer building, aren't you?
Okay. Okay, anything further on that? Seeing none, thank you, planner. And we'll move on to the next report, which is Parks, Building Maintenance and Recreation. For received. Move over. We see it all's in favor. And our Parks, Building Maintenance, Marina Director is here for any questions or comments. Counselor Grant.
I just had a quick one, and it's just to confirm. It was a question I was asked because in our PACS notice, we talk about the basketball court at Galardi Academy. And somebody was saying, well, isn't that private? So the public have the use of this basketball court after school hours, is that the?
That was correct.
Great, thank you. That's what I had said. And also the play equipment and all that is available after school hours. Thank you.
All right. It's not the, we can embrace private courts.
I just also have a question about that project. I noticed that one new loop has gone on in the last couple of weeks. Is that part of the project or is that just a stop?
No, that, that was a new basketball that you saw go up and the staff at the academy are taking care of that component. So they, their PAC had acquired two basketball packs and one they've put up. They wanted us to have a look at it and they wanted to touch brag at its role with some of their students, so that's, that's how that happened. And the other one, we won't have a short there.
Thank you.
All right. Anything further on Parks reports? You've had the good work, so.
Yeah.
All right, so moving on to the next one. We're at the Recreation Department. Move over.
Second.
We see it all's in favor. Questions cleared. Our Rec Director is here for, again, any questions or comments.
I just wanted to say, I mean, I grade all of course, wonderful. And I just was very impressed that with the replacement of the track system for the gym automatic wall, that we turned away the $30,000 contract and did it in-house for $4,000. So just, well done.
I'll pass that on to the staff. Thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor Grant.
I just wondered if you have any more information on the recreation software? I know it's in the report here, but that going, wow, looking good, or?
We're just in the beginning stages. We've already had a perfect mind over for a date and they will be coming back. Right now, we're answering the questions, basically a needs assessment, but we're, we're on track once again.
Perfect. Great. I just had the question that sometimes gets asked, I think it was on one of the comment sheets we got at the Rec Center inbox there around the projects, is the washrooms in the building, showers in particular, have been, I guess, a lot great for some people. in the building, showers in particular, have been, I think it's a long break for some people, not being happy with them, what is the plan to upgrade those facilities, I guess, is that?
It is, it's in our five-year budget plan, this year we're working with, we need to take care of the water seeping through the gymnasium floor, is our priority, and next on the list will be the showers.
Okay, Director Finance.
Your worship, we do have $10,000 in this year's budget to do some engineering at the Rex Center, and Al wanted a mechanical engineer to look at the water system capacity and look at some.
Geotechnical?
No, no, you asked for $10,000 in engineering for, to look at the hot water system.
A mechanical.
A mechanical engineer would look at that this year, because before we get into the rebuild of the washrooms in a couple of years' time, we need to know what the capacity is and where you might put a bigger hot water system.
It might be useful, just for future reference, if we can include some of that information in our next newsletters, so people know it's coming, it might be a bit of information people might be interested in, not that we're committing to doing it at this moment, but it is. All right, anything further on that report? Seeing none, thank you, Director Recreation. So we'll move on now to Public Works, Capital Operations, thank you. Can we see panels in favor? Questions, period, and yes, our engineers here with the opportunity to ask any questions or make any comments on those projects.
I'd like only to make a comment, only to say that our engineer is very kindly going to walk with me down to the Ellis Comox sidewalk, and she's going to explain to me firsthand just exactly why that bump has to involve all of that extra engineering work, because obviously for me to go to the constituent to say, well, she's going to put it into layman's terms so that I can do that, so thank you very much.
Counselor Grant.
Great, and thank you for the report, and the latter road shoreline protection, the tendered to the 18th of May, are we not able to tend this?
Yeah, it was, thank you, your worship, we went through, we got six tender results for that, and we just awarded it, I was going to give you an update on that, because it's kind of happened since I wrote the report, and it was awarded to Hazelwood Construction out of the NIMO, so hopefully we'll get all the information from them in the next few weeks with an updated schedule, and then hopefully construction will begin at the beginning of June and end by the end of August.
Great, and the whole project with the pathway as well?
Yeah, so the lowest ten, the, to have a cost here, but it was all within budget, that we do have some room as well, obviously to cover up our engineering fees, and we'll have an archaeologist on site, we'll have a geotechnical engineer, so including all those fees, and plus we have a bit of a contingency for change orders that come out, so we're in pretty good shape, we'll be forward, so we should be able to complete the project on time, because we're, and within budget, so.
And do you know when that might start?
We're hoping, probably, we're waiting to get an updated schedule from the contractor, and obviously all of his WCB and insurance and bonding in the next few weeks, so we're anticipating construction will start in mid-June and be complete by the end of August.
The usual notices, the public, well, neighbors will be.
That's right, and that'll be part of some of his submissions, traffic plan, sign and these paper ads, so that we can all review it and get all that application out to him, and obviously to the local residences as well, that we have a system, yeah.
Counselor Swift.
I'm just curious about the Comox Ave road from Key to Pritchard and the sidewalk, and I know we've been waiting for the development to go ahead, and do we foresee that that will happen this year, or will we get delays until this spring?
And hopeful, we had, well, obviously Apple Campbell side has proceeded, and we had discussions with Berwick as well, so we've started that communication, that's hopefully we can work together with that development and get that side of that sidewalk done, so.
Thank you.
Director Finance, if you still had your hand up.
Your worship, I just wanted to mention the bit that Shelley initially missed, which is, we're under budget on that project.
Yeah, just going back to Counselor Grant's comment about the crosswalk there, the plus or minus 50% of, what is it, 6,500 to 9,500, so, so it says during a busy.
Sorry, we're not on that report yet, we'll come to it in a minute, she was just asking if you were just relating to, we will be discussing this.
Oh, okay, sorry, I thought she had opened that up.
Well, yes, but.
Yeah, okay, I got you.
We have a report coming here.
Okay.
Yep. She was just going to bring it to you.
I just wanted to know about one of the, I mean, I think we're keeping our roads and stuff in really good shape, and that whole asset management plan is working well, but one piece right on Port Augusta, as in you crossing the lawn, I assume that'll be fix during development, if that ever happens.
Yeah, so I just delayed, we were supposed to look at it this year, I think I delayed to 2017, or, but to try to, yeah, coincide it with the development.
Gotcha, okay. And that was caused by a broken fire.
That's right, yeah.
Okay, anything further on the Public Works summary? Seeing none, we'll move on to Bylaw Enforcement Report. Move over to the seat. Second in the line.
Second.
All in favor? Period, and again, for information, staff, and questions, I guess, can you address to our Deputy Director of Maintenance. Counselor Grant, any questions?
Yes, I had a citizen complaint about regarding a continual unkempt property in their neighborhood, and I referred it to the Town Office, to the Bylaw Officer, but I'm wondering if our CAO can just, for the public's benefit, walk through the steps for enforcement for their situation like that again. So again, it's a continual unkempt property that's more than in sight, the appropriate thing is to refer it to the Bylaw Officer.
Yes, in a perfect world, what should happen?
If people contact Town Hall, either by phone or coming in person, the front office receptionist will take the information down, contact information, address of the property in question, that'll be referred out to Bylaw Enforcement Staff, and they'll investigate. Sometimes one person's version of what is considered unkempt or untidy does not meet the property maintenance standards that are laid out in the Bylaw. Regardless, our staff will investigate and should be getting back to the original complaint with what follow-up will happen, the thing, and if it does, if it does meet the standards of the property maintenance, Bylaw Enforcement will follow up with the property owner on title to give them a specific amount of time to address the issue, if it's not addressed, in extreme situations, we do have the authority to go on-site, clean up, and put bill on parking taxes, correction?
Just a follow-up to that, and because the citizen asked this question, if it was an absentee owner that's not, doesn't live here for a lot of the year, or more than that, what happens in a situation like that?
Same process?
Yep.
Thank you for that, anything else on Bylaw Enforcement? You didn't have it.
Yes, and, and then for the report, and the second plan, it was going from the Seagull Parcel, we're about to step one?
It's about, I'm sorry, I don't have the exact address, about midway up Torrance Road between Lazo in the south and, no, in the north, it's on the right-hand side, of course, it's right, right adjacent to the town. It's not the one right at the corner, no, it's about midway.
And what would maybe, might have been one of you that? Is it a water or a?
Yeah, it was, it was, it was meant to be a retirement residence for a couple, and plans to change, so.
And is there anything built on it, or it's empty or stretching up?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not sure, I believe that was when it was used as a horse pasture at some point.
I think it doesn't burn.
Okay, okay.
So would the plan, and I, you know, I noticed and appreciate that the town will do the consulting, so it would be the whole of Torrance on that side?
That's our question.
Sorry, to know that's.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. And just on the other one that's been advertised, and that advertising period is 24th of June, just a heads up for council, there is, I think, a good possibility that we'll be having a special council meeting to consider that after that, assuming there's no objections to get it approved, so hopefully it'll be around after the 24th of June to have a.
The Hectar Road.
Yes, one that's been advertised. Counselor Grant.
Yeah, something actually I brought up to CAO and Shelley Russell today, I got an email from the wing asking about bylaws and that regarding drones, and then Richard and I had a discussion, but I'm wondering, maybe not a bylaw, but just some acknowledgement or sign to have in the area, because many times I see drones out in the park there, but that is an aerodrome, the arrow, what do you call it?
Aerodrome.
Aerodrome where the float planes come in, because it's got to be nine kilometers away, so I'm just wondering, you know, people may not realize that they get their drone up high and the float plane comes in, you know, it's something perhaps we could bring some awareness to of the park.
Yeah, I don't know whether, for example, our parks use bylaw, has any specific provision on that?
Because I've seen them up the pilots as well. Yeah, and the wing is looking at, nationally, they're looking at putting some rules into place for their parks, but it extends to the aerodrome that we have here for the float planes to.
So from the movie Top Gun, it's too close for missiles, go again, is that what you're saying?
Counselor, you're just referring to drones, flying drones, not counselors, drones and other.
Yeah, well, there's that problem too.
There's no reports.
Counselor Swift.
Well, just on that same topic, I think there was a, Compass Adventures did a really good presentation last year that we like to see, or article based, so they should be made aware.
Well, exactly, yeah, because those things are great to have, but maybe a sign saying the float planes come in at this time, that time, and the other time, and then to fly them around them.
Yeah, it's an issue.
An increasingly bigger issue all the time.
All right, that is all for departmental reports, I do believe, additional annual public reporting, you have the schedule of DCCs and permits of exemptions.
Proceed with that.
And all in favor? Questions, period, so that is included in our annual reports, so for the public, and you can see the DCC balances at the end of 2015, and as we know, for a major road development contract, the balance in that area is pretty low, which will impact at least the midterm plans to construct things like condos, so that's something to keep an eye on, on the other hand, we could have a healthy balance for park acquisition, if those opportunities arise, so just a note on that, anything else people may wish to comment on? Seeing none, then we'll move on to the next report, which Counselor Al was touching on earlier, and that is to receive a report on the Comox Ave Ellis Street.
Move that.
The receipt panel is in favor, questions, period, so Counselor Al.
Yeah, thanks for the report, Shelley, it was great, question though, the 6,500, 9,500, if it was done in a quieter building period in summer, would it be cheaper? I'm just quickly trying to find a note here where the smaller, during busy construction period can be challenged, so is it possible that it could be cheaper, you know, plus or minus 50%?
Yeah, definitely the earlier we would get, you can get cheaper costs, but with this situation, I wouldn't count on it, because it's such a small marginal project for a contractor just to come out, it's probably more of an inconvenience for him, so he's going to want to make his money, so I couldn't see it dropping too much more, it might come down slightly, because work is work, but because it's such a small magnitude, we have to take that into consideration as well.
Isn't the scope of something like that within the ability of our own town staff to go in there and jackhammer that little bit out and?
I think if it was, again, resources and timing and that type of thing as well, this is a lot of hand forming, so it's a little bit more beyond capability developed and occurring, so it's not as straightforward, they could do some assisting, but probably we would have that contracted.
Other questions, comments?
It seems like a lot of money for us to kind of look at passing, is there been any thought to splitting the cost of them possibly? I mean, they have a strata council, they have money in their strata reserves, you know, I read the report and it says that there's no real issues with it, other than they don't like it and, you know, the way they're driving, but, I mean, you'd find out pretty quickly how serious they were about this, if we were to look at some approach like that, I just throw it out there as an idea.
Well, this report is presented to you for information in any further direction, so I thought was a direction that you wanted staff to pursue, that could be pursued.
Well, I thought since Mark was going to go meet with many issues.
Well, it may be helpful to present them with this information, at the very least, show them the cost associated with that, and whether that will be the same concern. Engage any overtures on their part, no, I suspect not, but you never know, I guess, would the plan be CAO to provide them with this information now that's being received by council?
Yes, we would include this as correspondence back, indicating, as the report, the diagram shows that there's adequate turning radius from an engineering perspective, and there's a bit of an explanation is, that I think supports their original statement that you do need to use the whole driveway when, say, making a turn, but that is a factor of design, you normally don't make the driveway wide enough for two-way vehicle traffic at all times.
Right, it's never been two-way.
Right.
Well, at the very least, we can send that information along, beyond that, I'm not sure whether council wishes to.
This is a little early for a negotiation at this point.
I suppose, I would imagine, I would imagine almost certainly that they will explain, yeah, the information provided, and we can visit again. Absolutely, yeah, at this point, we wouldn't be directing staff to do any of that and provide that information. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to correspondence. And this is for receipt, we will have a presentation about all of that, the receipt then, all in favor? We will be having the representatives on the committee of justice, and I believe they're scheduled to be a delegation next month for their council meeting, and this information obviously is provided to us earlier this month, and it's for your information and comments at this point, although you may wish to reserve any further comments or questions for the delegations. I had a quick look at it, it seemed fine to me, they were including, incorporating issues around social media, obviously that's been an issue in the news across Canada, and they're trying to bring this into 26 week context, so certainly appreciate the likelihood of this point, and hopefully the other one will get on site before it's full, but we'll hear from them next week. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move on, we do have a in-camera meeting for personal matters, so we'll ask that motion to go on camera, and they could, we should be able to film that. All in favor? Questions, period, and we'll have a break and then.